... played every single position.
One game.
Moving that so my wheels wouldn't hit it and tip me over later and embarrassing.
Rewind it on cable.
Okay, it's four o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Archer.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, if everyone will stand and we'll do a pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awards and proclamations.
Three point one, the day of November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Salina. Tammy Jarvis at Astro Books and Coffee House will read the proclamation.
Hi.
Hi.
First of all, before I read, I have a little bit of a point to pass out.
Oh, wow, look at this.
Yeah, that's right here.
We get something fun. Thank you.
So, Small Business Saturday is just, you know, celebrating.
You get one?
Small businesses, it's kind of the small business equivalent of Black Friday. So, I'll just read, yeah? Whereas the government of Salina, Kansas celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past years, past 20 years, and whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants, whereas 91% of all consumers believing that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important, and whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping, and whereas Salina, Kansas supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Do I read the part that says, "I, K. Crawford"?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, okay.
Yes, K. Crawford right now.
Now, therefore, KJ Crawford, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you very much for doing this, and Shandy helped me with, I got this through someone from the state, or maybe it was a national nonprofit group, but they wanted us to do this, and she said she'd find someone to read it, and I appreciate that, that you did that.
Well, here I am.
And I'll give you a copy of proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Tammy.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thanks for the bag.
Absolutely. Thanks for your business.
Okay, it's now Citizens Forum. Is there anyone here who would like to come before the podium? If so, and they can give their name, if you'll give your name and your address, can speak to the commissioners on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, hello.
Hi, Joan Ratslove, Salina. I just wanted to comment on something that was in the paper Tuesday, November 7, and it was "City Adds Gender Identity Protections," which, you know, that's the headline, but representing the Salina Area Workers Coalition, the thing that jumped out at me was that we have an employee council, and they were asked for, you know, the city asked the employees for their feelings about this matter, and I want to applaud the city for doing that, because the top-down approach alone is not the most productive way to conduct business and the people's business. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, item 5.1.
A public hearing regarding a Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund to finance the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant project. 5.1A, adopt resolution number 17-7488, authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund.
Martha Hester, all about water.
And it is a public hearing, so...
Yes. Public hearing, all open, the public hearing. How's that?
That was the key I was looking for.
Okay, open now.
Open now. And it is a public hearing for the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant project, and in my presentation, I will give you a brief project overview, talk about the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund application process, financing options, and the environmental clearance process that we've just worked our way through. And so, the Salina Water Treatment Plant and Well Field and the water rights associated with that well field were transferred from the former Schilling Air Force Base to the city of Salina in the mid-'60s. Use of these facilities has been only in emergency situations. In my 14 years here, we've used them once when we had a power outage to have some water supply out south. Our customers are not favorable to this because the water is just chlorinated and it's not softened, so it's a much harder water than they're accustomed to, so emergency cases is all. And in 2010, we completed a raw water supply study, and a portion of that recommended rehabilitating the well field and constructing a new water plant to help us through drought times, which we saw in 2006 when there was virtually no water in the Smoky Hill River, and then again in 2012, water was scarce in the river. Completed feasibility study in 2017 that was approved by KDHE. We looked at multiple sources of water and how to convey the water. We looked at existing vertical wells similar to what we have, a single horizontal collector well, and also considered using surface water from the river for this treatment plant. And probably the most important part of the process, we talked about two different types of treatment, one being lime softening and the other being membrane filtration that we're currently doing water testing and determining what our process can be as we move forward. The actual project scope for this project includes relocating two wells and rehabilitating three of the wells and associated transmission lines and finished water lines into our system, and a new 3.5 million gallons per day water treatment plant, whether it be lime softening or a membrane or RO facility. The estimated project cost is roughly $32 million, and we have proposed to fund this project through the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, and that's the requirement for this public hearing today, to give the public a chance to comment on this project as we move forward. Okay, Hester, and you'll have to have really good eyesight, which I don't, but I'll try to point out some keys. This is South Ohio and Waterwell Road. It has kind of a curve in it there. The proposed water treatment facility is, trying to make sure I don't blind Lauren there, is in this southeast corner of the area where the current existing water treatment facility is. It's a large concrete structure, old and antiquated. We have five wells. Well five is located up here in this residential area. It would be relocated possibly to the west. Well number one is right here on the treatment plant site, may be located, relocated south. Two, three, and four are out here along the Waterwell Road, just to give you a little perspective on where things are located for this project. The overall budget, as I mentioned, is $32 million in our pre-application with the KDHE for the State Revolving Loan Fund. We broke the project down, as you see on the screen. Construction cost was $21.7, engineering design, $3.4 million, construction-engineering, $2 million, half million in inspection, roughly $3.3 in contingencies, a million in legal and abstracting, soil investigations of $25,000, and a loan obligation origination fee of $80,000, which is a quarter percent of the total loan, so virtually $32 million. Worked with the Finance Department. We looked at 4% kind of as a standard loan right now, and if we work through the State Revolving Loan Fund at 2.17%, that's current rate today, we feel roughly that's $7.2 million over the 20 years of the life of the loan. So, it's tremendous savings for us, for this project, to use the State Revolving Loan Fund money. And as I mentioned, we're in the application process for the loan. We've completed Part One. It's been submitted and approved, which basically described the project and the budget, and now we've moved into Part Two, which is why we're here today, to complete the environmental clearance certification regarding lobby, have this public hearing, and then a resolution from the meeting. Part Three is yet to be completed, and it's a capacity development survey. We did complete one for KDHE early in 2017, so a good share of that work is done, and we'll be able to use it, so we're very close to wrapping up all the work we need for the loan application. The environmental clearance gets sent out to 12 agencies, and we have received nine approvals back and three conditional approvals. The change application for wells number one and five will be required by the Kansas Division of Water Resources, because we're changing the location slightly. We also, this one was somewhat of a surprise, we need a professional archeologic...
Archaeological.
That's good, thank you. I couldn't get that word off my tongue. Survey of the water treatment plant site, not the transmission line sites, and we're working with HDR to get that done. There's no known sites in our area, but, or known site on our, area on our site, but there is some in the surrounding area, so they're asking us to run that drill, so we're working on that. And the last item is a formal waste stream survey review, and that is from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and until we determine whether we're an RO facility or lime softening facility, we can't complete that formal waste stream analysis, because with the RO, it could be anything from deep well injection to discharge into the river to discharge at the effluent of the wastewater treatment facility. Until we get through the process, we can't define that piece, and once that's defined, then that'll clear that up. So, basically, we've met all of the needs for Part Two of the application, and at this time, I'll just move into the, basically, the fiscal note for this project. The costs for the proposed improvements are included in the current 2017 through 2021 rate study, and we've been including those at the conventional rate of 4%, so eventually that'll be a change in that number at some point in time when we firm up the loan. And so, today, staff has identified two options for the city commission to consider. Adoption of resolution number 17-7488, authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. Or option two would be to not adopt resolution number 17-7488 and give further direction to staff. Staff recommends option one, because it is a tremendous money savings for the city.
Questions?
I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have, I have two sets of questions. The first is just one question, and that is, when we speak of the purpose of this thing being mainly to serve as a backstop for drought protection, so to speak, what will the, what effect would the rewatering of the river be on providing some of that additional drought time protections to our water supply?
The rewatering of the river would maybe recharge our groundwater supply some, but the actual shortage that fell for us was in surface water, and we have a water right for surface water and a water right for wells, and initially, they were 10 million gallons a day for each, so without any surface water, we were limited to 10 million gallons. We've been moving through the process of the downtown well field improvements there and the airstrippers, and then this south plant, and we get to a point where the long-term goal is by 2050 is to be able to meet the majority, if not all, of our demand, assuming our projections stay in line with groundwater.
What are we basing that, what are we basing the demand, what projections are we basing the demand on?
The demand is, boy, you're really stretching my memory now, but about a half percent of growth a year as far as population, and then looking at our industrial growth and kind of spreading that over the next several years, and it matches the comprehensive plan and all of the other plans, the population, and that has been compared and matched together, so we all are using the same data.
Right, and I know that this, I know that the projections that we're dealing with have, were put together probably several years ago.
And, well, we actually relooked at them when we did the feasibility study, because our projections were higher in 2010, because we had not seen the benefits of the water conservation rates and not wasting water in the summer. In the earlier years, we had peaks of 14 million gallons a day, and currently, we've been near, more near to 10 million gallons a day, so our actually peak demands and long-term demands have reduced some, which we're reusing those numbers in our new calculations.
And as a good water person, you're talking water demand, and I was talking population...
Yeah, and...
Population projections.
Population means water demand, in my book, so...
Right, but I mean, I'm looking at, and I think, Jason, you probably know, the projections I looked at from the Center of Economic Development Business Research out of Wichita State has projected about, not a half of a percent a year, but five tenths of a percent, a tenth of the, a tenth of that, of those projections. So, just kind of concerned as to what, what point the future population demand calls for this plant versus sort of just that backup and an update, and, and to almost have, you know, the way I look at it, it's not, it's not bad to have in an older water treatment facility, maybe a bit of overlap and redundancy built in. Is that perhaps part of this, built into this as well?
Yeah, I would tend to say if I was going to place money on any of the projections, I wouldn't put my money on any of them, because they'll all be wrong at the end of 50 years.
Right.
Because we really don't know. It's looking pretty far out, and I think Martha hit on it, a big part of it is anticipated for industrial growth as well and the water supply for that, not just typical domestic use that we might have where the projections might mean a little bit more.
Okay, and then, just kind of as a, kind of, the big, the big part of that is from, from the payback, like how we pay this back, and because if we're not looking, I mean, if we end up not increasing, if the demand ends up not being there to increase it, we're paying off the $32 million with the same amount of people that we have here now. So, where, does that come out of service and increase in the service fees, or what is the, how are we paying, what is the, how are we paying this back, the loan back?
The repayment rate will, the payback will be through our, our water rates. One thing I didn't mention that makes me feel good, and hopefully it'll make you feel good when I tell you, is we did have a tornado lined up on the city of Salina some time back, and the water plant was right in that focus, and that made me think a lot about the communities that's lost their water supply and just how wonderful it would have been to have a small supply of water at a different location that wouldn't have been in that direct line and be able to meet our basic needs, as opposed to a portable tank in the middle of the city. So, behind the scenes, that is a tremendous safety factor for us down the road. I wish for no tornadoes, but it really pulled a lot of us together and made us think seriously about that.
Right, and then just one last question as it relates to the fiscal note, and that is, what would be the anticipation for an annual O&M budget for this facility?
That was included in some of our, the facility study. We currently do not intend to add a lot of additional staff. Hope this plant can be operated more remotely. It's, it's what we see in the new technology and the capabilities are there to do that, and what the schedule is that we run this plant, but we have looked at those numbers and we factored those into our rates and our analysis. I can't tell you those off the top of my head, but we do have those numbers.
Would they be significantly less than our existing plant?
Yes, our existing plant provides both surface water and groundwater treatment, so it's almost like two plants operating parallel. This will be a, current plan is for this to be a groundwater facility, and 3-point MGD, 3.5 MGD versus 20 MGD, so the facility is much smaller.
Okay, and is there any plan for public art?
That has not been discussed yet.
Okay.
Is that a safe answer?
It is a water treatment facility.
We, we have, we have some downtown where it's most visible, but...
Any other questions? Okay, any public comment?
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Martha. Any public, any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for action.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 17-7488, authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 177488. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Put this down to the consent agenda.
6.1, approve the minutes of November 6th, 2017. 6.2, authorize the purchase of a 2016 Ford Explorer from the Kansas Highway Patrol Fleet Vehicle Sales, including additional equipment in the amount of $24,500. 6.3, award of contract for site lighting improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, project number 63103, to Precision Electrical Contractors LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $23,401. 6.4, authorize the mayor to approve supplemental agreement number five amendment and complete restatement for consulting services, amending the Dragon Corporation costs from $7,23,000 to $7,96,000, and specialty contractor costs from $2,248,000 to $2,305,000, and change order number two for laboratory support with ALS Environmental in the amount of $7,755. Change order number eight for surveying support with the Wilson and Company, Inc., in the amount of $971, and change order number nine for drilling support with Environmental Priority Service, Inc., in the amount of $3,580.
Okay, is there anything on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to pull off, ask questions about?
6.4.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the rest of the agenda, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3?
Motion to approve 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
Second. Okay, motion and a second to approve items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. 6.4, Commissioner?
I guess my question is, I just want to make sure that we are staying with these increases. I know that we've had a few along the way where we've needed to make adjustments, and I just kind of wanted to confirm that we are still within our budgeted contingency at this point.
Yes, we have roughly 1.2 million in contingency, and we're roughly in the range. Right now, let me get to the part where I can maybe point to that to you. We have on page three, we give the total of our additional investigatory work of roughly $826,000.
Right.
And we have in the paragraph above, contingency funds of $1,222,000, so we're staying well within that. And then, in addition to this, we have roughly $575,000, or $525,000 in project management by Salina entities that is not getting charged to the project. We're doing that internally, plus an unallocated contingency of $227,000. So, we are doing incredibly well, staying below our contingencies funds, so, does that help you?
Awesome. I guess where I got a little bit confused was I saw the, on, on page three, the unallocated contingency of 227 that just carries across there, and that's what...
It's just never been allocated for anything, so it's actually money in our, for us. I was going to say money in our pocket, but that sounded bad, but it's, money hasn't been spent, so, I'll rephrase that.
Money in our city purse.
That's right, it's in our purse, city purse. That's good wording, so...
When I ran for Commissioner seven years ago, one of the things that people were talking most about was the whole situation of contamination at Schilling, and, and I think, I feel like we're not, I know we must be making progress, but I, I keep wondering about it, and I keep hearing about it in the community, so I'm just bringing that up for...
I'll put in a plug for a, a public meeting this Friday at 9:00 in this room.
I did see that that would be...
And we'll give you an update, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We're, we're getting close to completing the corrective action decision, should be by the end of the year, which will define the plan forward, and we have some new staff at HD, or KDHE, so the review process, we're not sure what time that will take to get through it, but things are, are coming to an end, and we will be seeing some progress. So, public meeting, update, should answer your questions.
9:00 Friday morning.
9:00 Friday morning, here.
Commissioners, I want to clarify something, too. We do expect to have a significant amount of contingency left over at the end of this phase. The next phase, we have the negotiation, settlement with the Department of Justice when we just, when we address remediation, but we would expect that any funds left over here, well, they will have to be used for that, so when we talk about being in our funds, they are specific to the project. I thought it'd be, it's good to be clear on that. They stay with the project, they'll go to the next phase.
Help reduce our costs then.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Martha.
Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Anyone else? Madam Mayor, I would move that we authorize you to approve the supplemental agreement number five amendment and complete restatement and change order for the former Schilling Air Force Base Supplemental Remedial Investigation Number Three, groundwater testing for additional contaminants of concern as identified in the packet.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve supplemental agreement number five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, going to move on to administration.
7.1, second reading, ordinance 17-10908, loving Salina Business Improvement District Number One, service fees for 2018.
Okay, ordinance number 1710908 was passed on first reading on November 6th, 2017, and since that time, no comments have been received. Okay. I entertain a motion for... Entertained a motion for, um, approval of seventeen one oh nine oh eight.
Do we approve on second reading ordinance number one seven one oh nine oh eight?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number one seven one oh nine oh eight, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number One service fees for 2018. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
And Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Item seven point two.
Second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one zero nine zero seven, amending the Salina Code, changing the name of the lead district back to the Salina Business Improvement District Number One.
Ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh seven was passed on first reading on November sixth, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. Entertained a motion on ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh seven.
Madam Mayor, move approval on second reading ordinance number one seven dash one zero nine zero seven, amending the Salina Code, changing the name of the lead district back to the Salina Business Improvement District Number One.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading on ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh seven. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Seven point three.
Second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one zero nine zero four, approving a text amendment to add indoor shooting ranges to the list of conditional uses allowed in the C three, the C five districts, the C six district, the C seven district, the I two district, and the I three district.
Okay. Ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh four was modified to delete indoor shooting ranges from the list of conditional uses in the C four district, and to make indoor shooting ranges a conditional use in the I two and I three districts instead of permitted use, and passed on first reading on November sixth, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. Entertained a motion on seven one oh nine oh four.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one oh nine oh four, approving a text amendment to add indoor shooting ranges to the list of conditional uses allowed in the C three district, the C five district, the C six district, the C seven district, the I two district, and the I three district.
Second.
Okay. We have a, um, a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh four. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Seven point four.
Second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one zero nine zero six, approving an amendment of section forty-two dash three three two and forty-two dash three 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 of the C six district regulations by removing mini warehouses from the list of permitted uses in the section forty-two dash three three two of the C six district regulations, and adding mini warehouses to the list of conditional uses in the section forty-two dash three 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 of the C six district regulations.
Okay. Ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh six was passed on first reading on November sixth, 2017, and since that time, no comments have been received.
Got a question for staff. Um, have we heard from Mr. Joseph at all on, on, and I'm just picking this item because this and the companion item kind of make up the two items that he was interested in. Can you give us any update on that?
Yeah, Deputy Manager Skreg did make contact with him, Michael.
Appreciate that.
I, I don't know, we did have a conversation about his, his offer of, offering the building to the city. I don't know how much I should relay publicly, that I think there is some interest if he's able to see some financial benefit in some other form, he might entertain that. We just started to have a conversation about what that might look like, and it leaves me tasked with kind of investigating options to discuss with him further. So the way that we left it in the conversation was, I'd see what I can find in that regard, and his option to pursue a conditional use permit still remained. He was aware of that and would be working on that as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ordinance seventeen one oh nine oh six was passed on first reading on November sixth, 2017. Since that time, no other comments have been, been put forward.
Are we not, nine oh...
One oh nine oh six.
One oh...
One zero nine zero six.
Okay.
Entertained a motion for second reading.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one zero nine zero six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on a second reading ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh six. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
And Mayor Crawford.
Aye.
Seven point five, second reading ordinance number seventeen dash one zero nine zero five, changing the zoning district classification from C six to C five on property, property legally described as lots one through four, block one of the CKS addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed to sixteen sixteen and sixteen forty West Crawford Street.
Okay. Ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh five was passed on first reading on November sixth, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received.
Madam Mayor, move that we approve on second reading ordinance number one seven dash one zero nine zero five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number seventeen one oh nine oh five. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
And Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Item seven point six.
Resolution number seventeen dash seven four nine zero, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of the Army to provide a section 1135 Smokey Hill River Aquatic Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study for the Smokey Hill River Renewal Project Number seven zero zero one four.
Okay, Martha, once again.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I gave you a pretty long background, and I'm going to shorten that up and get right to the important stuff, but basically, in August of 2010, the Smokey Hill River Renewal Master Plan was accepted by the City Commission. 2016, the Salina residents approved a sales tax increase that included projects to preserve our park system, and the river renewal is a, a component of that to bring back an improvement that was reasonable, and so moving forward with that. HDR was selected to complete the Smokey Hill River Renewal Project, and City Commission authorized an agreement with them in April of this year. And in the middle of all of that, we started working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in February. City staff, HDR, and Friends of the River Foundation representatives met with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and we began the discussions on a section 1135 ecosystem restoration cost share, which, uh, the cost share was 75% federal, 25% local, and with the maximum of $10 million in federal expenditures for construction for projects that improve the ecosystem. Shortly after that, in February, the Cityus line, we submitted a letter to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers seeking assistance under that section 1135 program. And as we kept working with the project in August, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, our Kansas City District, submitted a continuing authorities program, Federal Interest Determination Report, known as a FID, or FID, so that's the short for that, to the Northwestern Division in Portland, Oregon. And in September, John Grothaus, Chief Planning, Chief of Planning Section from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, was here and presented in detail that program to give you a little better insight to where we were headed. And in October of 2017, the Kansas City District was notified by the Northwestern Division that the FID was approved, and that they had $150,000 in federal feasibility funding to be used for this project in 2018, which begins October first through September 30th. Uh, the good news is, in the feasibility studly, study, the first hundred thousand is, is funded 100% through the Corps, and then after that point, it's a 50-50 cost share, and in-kind work as far as property easements and such can be included in those costs. So the next step to keep moving down the road towards this funding is to execute the cost share agreement between the Department of Army and the City of Salina. The agreement was attached. It's a section 1135 Smokey Hill River Aquatic Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study. We'll just call it study from now on, just to make that short. And basically, it's a plan that will restore the degraded wetlands and the stream habitat. Uh, what's different for me is that this time, we don't have a detailed scope and a fee. And so that's something that's a little unusual, so I've asked John Grothaus, which you've met before, to speak with you on the logic behind that and to present the agreement and answer any questions you might have in the importance of this agreement as, as we move forward. So I'll ask John to go through that. Once he's completed, I'll come back and cover the, the funding for 2018, and then our recommended action. John?
Mayor and City Commission and City Staff, thank you very much for having me here today to talk about the agreement. Um, feasibility cost share agreement is essentially the agreement that enables the Corps to cost share with the city to produce the feasibility report that, once approved, is necessary for funding and construction, design and construction of the project. The importance of the agreement is essentially, we have to have an agreement signed to have, so the funding was given to us, the initial funding for the feasibility study was provided, the allocation was approved contingent upon signing the agreement. So what they want nowadays is they really want you to sign the agreements and get started, and then the scoping document, and then the study phase subsequent to that is typically prepared after the agreement's signed, and they want a, a cost sharing agreement signed in order to fund the, the projects or the study phases. So, um, you know, like it or not, that's essentially the terms that have been given to us, and so we convey those terms to try to put the city in the best possible position when there's funding, competitive funding nationally for these programs, basically. So this is the planning feasibility phase. What does it entail? Well, it prepares first some alternative plans, some concept plans, to make sure we can look at different ideas and coalesce and mutually agree upon what's the best path forward, what's the best plan for the city and the Corps of Engineers Authority. And we look at engineering, so we'll do hydraulic, river engineering, civil, civil engineering, excavation, grading, site utilities, geotechnical engineering, subsurface geology, structural engineering, hazardous and toxic waste, preliminary hazardous and toxic waste survey to make sure that we're not going to accidentally find something that's hazardous, and that would be a preliminary survey. We wouldn't do a detailed survey unless we find evidence that there's something we might hit in construction. Then, since it's ecosystem restoration, we have biological modeling and biology to make sure that we have features, plantings, what have you, to make sure that we achieve the desired goal for the restoration project. Um, the, the phase covers all permitting, section 404, Clean Water Act 404, water quality, any state, um, state, Department of Agriculture, Division of Water Resources, any DOT, railroad, any kind of permits we might need for the project would be, would happen at this phase. A detailed real estate plan, so once the plan is selected, we do a detailed layout of all lands, easements, and rights of way required for the project, a detailed cost estimate, and approximately a concept or 35% level design plans. So by the time this report is concluded, there won't be much left to the imagination in terms of what you're going to be getting for the project and what, what it's going to cost, and what it will cost the city. Implementation phase, design and construction. Design is the design of the final plans and specifications for construction, and then construction phase. Implementation is cost shared, 75 federal, 25 local, and lands and easements and rights of way, whether you own them or not, in advance, you get credit, um, toward the, the value of those if they're required for the project, up to 25% share. So the feasibility agreement we have tonight is divided up into a couple sections. Believe it or not, it's much simpler than the, the form they used to use. Article one is simple definitions. Article two is the terms. Essentially, it's the phase, the report, the product that comes out is 50-50 cost shared, and it's pay-as-you-go, so you don't provide all the money upfront for the phase cost. Basically, only the funds, as we get federal funds, then we, you can match us proportionally. So we'll let you know what our funding allocation, as we have done, is, is projected to be, then you can match us proportionally, uh, year by year, or however it works. Article three is, actually lays out the cost itself. It's 50-50, so the estimated cost is $800,000. The estimated cost shared cost, 50-50, is $700,000, of which we would pay 350, and the city would pay 350. Uh, and that doesn't have to be cash, it could be work in kind, too, not just cash, if you wanted to do some work in kind. So if we do surveys, sometimes we do site surveys, sometimes the city crews can do surveys. It's just an example of how things work sometimes, so. We cannot unilaterally, we cannot unilaterally increase the cost of the study phase without written agreement by the city in advance. So we can't say the study's now going to cost a million dollars and you are going to owe us. We can't do that. We have to agree to the increased, if there's an increased scope, what's the justification, and we have to get written concurrence in advance before we can go forward. Uh, we maintain proportionality in our financial system, so we can't accidentally exceed the cost and then hit you with the bill afterwards because we monitor as we go. We have to maintain proportionality as we go in our system, so we can't stumble across exceeding your cost. Article four is a termination, so it has a robust termination clause. Bottom line, at any point during the study, you don't like the direction it's going, or you don't want to do the project anymore for any reason whatsoever, you can terminate the agreement. The only thing you would owe is any proportional costs that have already been allocated. So, the, the Kansas City District has a pretty strong track record of success. The vast majority of our projects have gone successfully to construction. Uh, we just got done completing construction on a large wetland restoration project up in Iowa at the Sedan Bottoms Wildlife Management Area. Richard managed that project, it was very successful. We just completed an inspection tour of all our completed projects over the last 10 or 15 years, and all of our projects are functioning very well, very successfully. Um, every year, we send out, believe it or not, we send out customer surveys to people that are in partnership agreements with us to gauge whether they're satisfied or not, and the, out of a five possible score, our rec, our average is 4.7. So we have strong partnerships in all our agreements, and all the projects tend to go successfully to projects, and all our partners tend to be happy at the end. That's, that's how it works. Um, there's no overlap. So if HDR is doing work, uh, as part of the riverfront project for the city, um, we won't duplicate the work. We're going to get together, reconcile the scopes, and make sure that HDR and the Corps are working in an integrated fashion such that we don't duplicate effort or anything like that.
Very good.
Subject, that's all I have. Is there any questions, or...
Sounds like you laid it out pretty, pretty well. I, I can even understand what's going on here. I think that's great.
Wow, thank you. Well, you're, you understood the last time I was here, too.
Yes, I did. I did. I did. Any other questions?
Yeah. As far as the contacts, you said you'd be working to make sure that you're coordinated with HDR, but who will the direct parties in main contact be between us and, and, and the Corps?
So we'll have a, a team, a, a project team that will work, um, hand in hand with HDR's project team.
Okay.
And we'll have a project manager, uh, like we have Eric Dove for HDR. We'll have a counterpart in our office, Richard, or someone in our office will be the project manager, uh, to work in an integrated fashion with the HDR team. We may choose to hire HDR to do part of the work for the Corps, um, you know, in which case it would be even better integrated, so.
Okay.
We have them working on a couple other projects for us right now, so.
Okay. What is a, what is a, the study and concept development, pre-construction type activities? What, what is a typical timeframe on that? What, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
Uh, depending on the scope and the funding, sir, we try, we try to keep them under three years. Um, we got $150,000 this year. Funding has been a little constrained in recent years, so we can go as fast as the funding allocations and the, the scope lets us go. We typically, on these feasibility... We typically, on these feasibility studies, don't take more than three years.
How does that tie in with our, on the finance of this thing, financing it with temp notes? And how's the timing on that work for us taking out those temp notes?
Well, that's a good question. I don't think it will affect our temp notes' timing. The real question probably is how does it affect our overall project timeline? And so that's a better question, I think, from Martha on the timeline.
HDR and I have had several conversations on that piece, and currently, in 2017, our concept is to get through the public involvement and revisit the old master plan, decide where we're headed. 2018 is to do the preliminary design of the full 6.8 miles. At the end of 2018, we'll be making decisions as to how to move forward, what we can afford, what we're going to build, what makes the most sense. And that design will be in 2019. So you can already see we're out a couple of years, and the portion that's more of the river renewal design is somewhat separate than what the Army Corps will be working on because they'll be looking at the ecosystem. Obviously, one of the issues is being able to dredge the channel and have the water flow to, you know, move forward with the project. So that's our current schedule. I'll be honest with you, that's a pretty aggressive schedule for a project this large, so we may match very well as time goes along.
Three years seems like nothing.
It does, so. I mean, the potential, and there is the potential, if we really felt we could pay for some portion of this work, and it would just be added into our overall cost share, from my understanding.
Yeah. Martha, that's--
So we have some options to pick up the pace if it becomes a problem for us, but we're hoping that the funding matches up. It's a little too early to be concerned about overall schedule. John?
That's a good segue, too. Real quick question on that is, I was asked earlier and was mistaken on the, being able to have in-kind. Do we, are we able to even anticipate at this point what portion of our $350,000 might come from in-kind work?
I have not made any attempt to define that, but obviously, some of the work that we're talking about, the survey and other areas, we could potentially be able to help. But at this point in time, I think once we have a detailed scope and we've really sorted through, this part belongs, it's still in HDR's contract, we can utilize that information. This belongs in the Corps contract. So we get both scopes in hand. I don't feel comfortable throwing a number out.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I'm hopeful we can find some in-kind services.
Yeah, I thought it might be too early to estimate, but there's a good chance that the total cash obligation will probably be less than the 350, is what it sounds like.
And the overall, correct me if I'm wrong, John, the $800,000 is your best guess at this time?
Yes.
Can volunteers do any of that in-kind or not? Do you know?
It would have to be volunteer work, anything, you know, we sign an agreement with the city, and then the city can sign sub-agreements or sub-partners and bring on sub-partners, and then just submit us a letter of, you know, invoice or whatever this task has done, we can work that out. We can, as we go through with HDR and lay out the tasks in their scope and the tasks needed to get the feasibility report done, we'll come across overlaps or whatever and be able to sort out what can be done for in-kind and all that. And then as we get closer to actual, the cost estimate for the project, get self-improvementation and move forward to the end of the feasibility report, we can present a table, a projected table of allocation and funding for implementation and break it out by federal and non-federal and, you know, give you a better projection for that future once we get into the feasibility process and the cost estimate.
Mayor, in all likelihood, the tasks that'll have to be completed are probably going to be too technical for volunteer work, but we can keep our eyes open just in case there's tasks where we could utilize it.
I think there's quite a few environmentalists out there interested in this, hopefully.
Could be, yeah.
We built a 2,000-acre wetland restoration at Milford Lake, and we worked with Kansas Wildlife and Parks. We also had the Wildscape Foundation, and they brought in volunteers. I think we had some National Guard, and they cobbled together a bunch of in-kind work on the construction part, so.
So you never know. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Martha, thank you. Are you not done with us yet?
I'm not done yet. I need to wrap it up now. Basically, based on John's comments there, we have a budget allocation of $50,000, and it's included in the 2018 Sales Tax Fund. Worked with Cindy on that. A project has been set up within the city's capital funds, project fund for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Project, and the cost for this Section 1135 study of the $300,000 will be funded from that project and reimbursed through a temporary note. The total currently in there is $3,295,700, which is the HDR contract. That will have to be revisited and renewed to cover these feasibility study costs as we get the final scope and sort through the portion that HDR has in their contract, what needs to be in the Corps' contract. So we have a lot of work to do to get all of that sorted out, and it is very, in my opinion, it's fairly complicated and some pretty technical pieces that need to be done. So trying to sort that out in advance and keep John moving with the funding was slowing us down, so we just need some time to work through all of that, which we'll be able to do now. And so basically, we brought to you two options for our recommendation. One is to approve Resolution Number 17-7490, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Army to provide Section 1135 Smoky Hill River Renewal Aquatic Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Project Number 70014. Or the second option is to not approve Resolution Number 17-7490 and give staff further direction. Staff recommends Option One, and be glad to answer any additional questions if you have those.
Questions? Intervene a motion for Resolution 177490.
Do you want to open it up for public comment?
Well, we can open it up for public comment.
Notice some folks out here.
That's John Ratzle, Salina. I just wondered, since we've had public projects in the past where, you know, things like schools or the fieldhouse or different things, and it seems like the question always comes up in, out and about, are we using local contractors? And so I'm not familiar with the details on this, but I just wanted to ask if preferential use of local contractors is being considered, you know, kind of keep our development dollars at home.
Okay. Well, thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think for this, for this particular portion of this, the consulting, we've already have the consultants already in place.
Sure. Well, there's--
But I think on the construction side--
Yeah, there's always contracting down the line.
Generally, we'll just have to wait for that because we're actually kind of tied into a competitive bid, a qualified competitive bid at this time, so hopefully we'll, as other projects, have some contract, local contractors that will want a piece of it, so. I'm assuming that's--
We have, so, it's a federal project, so you have certain goals for contracting, but typically what we go with on projects like this is small business, competitive, and we try to maximize the opportunities for Kansas contractors to compete. We can't guarantee that a Kansas contractor will get the bid or a local, but we try and maximize the opportunities that a local slash Kansas contractor, they can bid on the job, so that's what we--
Thank you, John. Any other public comment?
I like that answer.
Yeah, it was a good question, too.
And I had asked a city manager, Gage, this morning about whether or not we had a local preference policy when we're soliciting bids or doing RFQs or anything like that, and you can explain your response better than I can summarize it.
Thank you. Yeah, that question gets asked every so often, and the response is, is at least in the modern time, last 20-plus years, maybe 25, 30 years, we have not had a local preference policy, and I can't speak before that. And the primary reason, when we do discuss it, is that in a bidding situation, if you have a local preference policy, you could lose competitiveness of the bids if you do that, because not everything we bid will have a lot of choices of, you know, contractors, service providers, for example, or vendors, for that matter, on all the products that we have. And so if you would typically have four or five bids, and then if you had a policy in place and you narrowed it to one or two bids, you could affect your competitiveness, you could create higher prices for yourself. So as a policy, the city has never actually adopted a local preference policy, just to ensure the fullest competition for bidders. Now, with that said, what we do find is, is most of the projects that we do do draw in local bidders, and most of them are going to be your engineering infrastructure and your utilities infrastructure projects. So when we have a lot of funds in our capital improvement plan for those projects, we are providing quite a lot of work for those general contractors, and also then we'll pick up a lot of subcontractors as well. So in the end, those projects do typically garner a lot of local work, but we just don't have a formal policy for that.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 177490, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Department of Army to provide Section 1135 Smoky Hill River Aquatic Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Project Number 70014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 177490. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 7.7.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, we have commercial air service in Salina, and that's, of course, provided out at our airport, which is managed by the Salina Airport Authority. And we're able to have commercial air service because of, in a community our size, because of funding from the Department, U.S. Department of Transportation through what they call the Essential Air Service Program. Most communities our size would find that commercial air service is not profitable and therefore wouldn't otherwise have that, and so that's one of the basis for the, what we call the EAS program. We typically see the Department of Transportation bid for that service every couple of years. I don't know that they have to stay on that timeline, but that's what we typically see. That time is here, they have solicited bids, bids have been received and have been reviewed by the Salina Airport Authority. And in just a quick minute, Tim Rogers, the Salina Airport Authority Executive Director, will take you through the bid and service options. Real quick, when we look at this, we think we have an opportunity to enhance our service, which would fit your comprehensive or strategic plan goal number three, which calls for the highest quality of service as possible, and we think we can help do that. What we're, what's being asked for today is simply a letter of recommendation as a public stakeholder that would go to the U.S. Department of Transportation, so there's no fiscal impact. So you do have a couple of choices to authorize the mayor and for me to jointly sign the letter and send that out to the Department of Transportation, or not to. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Rogers, who has a presentation for you, and I think he'll probably be able to answer all your questions, and if not, we can help him the best we can on our end. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Jason.
Is that what we have?
Do we have it?
Is that it all right?
Right, have it.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason, and Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to review with you the proposals received for providing essential air service at Salina, Kansas, at the Salina Regional Airport. Again, the significance of today's presentation and your discussion and decision is to indicate preference, a community preferences to what this community would like to see as far as scheduled air service. The essential air service program is based upon certain qualifications and eligibility, and the eligibility is based upon the community. In this case, the city of Salina, and again, so the key elected body to express preference is the Salina City Commission. This morning, the Salina County Commissioners adopted a position and approved a position anticipating approval by the City Commission that they would endorse your decision, and we have other bodies, other entities that are working along the same lines, the Salina Economic Development Organization, the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, the Airport Authority will support the recommendation. We also have pending support letters and confirmation from our elected officials, our state legislature, Senator Hardy, Representative Clays, Representative Johnson, and Representative Dirks. They are anticipating your action today, too, as we move through this. The Airport Authority, in partnership with the city, the county, the Salina Chamber, and the Salina Economic Development Organization, actually started this process this past spring in contracting, one of the first steps is the contract with an air service consultant who's truly one of the experts in this area of small rural community air service. The Arcstar Group, the managing partner, is Mr. Gary Foss, who has over 40 years of experience in the airline industry. 30 years of that was with American Airlines and as his Chief Operating Officer for American Eagle. Gary designed the type of proposal that you will talk about today for many communities for American Eagle. This time, it's kind of preparing a package that was then presented to interested air carriers that were interested in this community. And the interest came about because we've had success. In June of 2016, Great Lakes Airlines came in and started non-stop flights to Denver, and that has been identified as a success in restoring and revitalizing commercial air service for a smaller community. But we can do better because there is a market demand here, and what we found is that demand starts getting to the type of aircraft that you see on the screen. There is a demand for the regional aircraft. So if you go to page, to the slide four, back up a little bit, and I'll try to go through this quickly and get to your questions and discussion. The first step by Arcstar was to determine the catchment area. The catchment area is an air carrier, airline term to define how many tickets are being purchased by citizens or by residents in this catchment area. And that's done by using airline reporting corporation, ARC, information based upon credit card transactions, and that's tracked by ZIP code. So we determine the size of the catchment area, if you go to the next slide. And that catchment area is really defined as 11 counties and over 33, there are over 30 ZIP codes. What was determined, was found that since the last time a true market and demand study was done, that this market, this area, had grown by over 18%. There were 301,000 passengers annually, or 412 per day each way, that people buy tickets, and through the catchment area study, we're able to determine which airline, which airport, and destination that those tickets are being purchased for. This is real data. It is not just an expectation or we think this will work, so this plan has been created off actual travel data out of our region. It really came down to, the market is, was underserved, and the best type of service for this market, and to continue to develop it, it really required regional jet service, and it came out to more than one hub. If you go to the next slide, please. If we look at the last slide at the bottom, where it gets us to, on September 17, the United States Department of Transportation did request proposals for essential air service and from interested air carriers. There were four carriers that responded. Great Lakes Airlines, who is the incumbent, did respond. Aerodynamics, Inc., doing business with Sky Value Airways, Boutique Airlines, and SkyWest Airlines responded. Go to the next slide. You can see quick summaries of those proposals by those air carriers. Great Lakes and SkyWest were clearly the two to consider further. We, with Arcstar Group and Gary Foss, we did give both carriers more information, and SkyWest really responded to that information as far as what it takes to really develop this market. Go to page nine of the report, you will see the Arcstar recommendation, as they've looked and analyzed from the technical aspect, the proposals. There's five reasons to support the proposal submitted by SkyWest Airlines, that will do business as-- business as United Express, a fully branded United Express operation. One, their financial stability. This air carrier is one of the largest airlines in the United States as a regional air carrier, the operative fleet of over 400 regional jets. They have a documented pilot training, retention, and hiring program, and they have the means to make, to make this, make this offer. They are proposing jet service to Denver and Chicago, two of United's main hubs. We're doing this so we can get true eastbound, westbound connections, and increase the number of connections from today by over 144% for our Salina area residents. And this is also an economic development, I think, win for this community, this region. And I'll just jump to the last, towards the last slide, and go to number five, and slide four, page 14, slide 14. And I think it's a very important statement to kind of highlight, that the importance of this type of service, and this type of service pattern, size of aircraft, the aircraft brand, but if you look at the recommendation and economic development throughout the region, and I'll just read, because I think it's important for everybody to hear what this says, "There are few greater contributors to economic development than the quality of air service. Implementation of United Airlines service operated by SkyWest to Chicago on top of Denver will not only increase trade activity to and from Salina and the rest of central Kansas by enabling faster and easier movement of passengers and goods to more places, and help with corporate recruitment efforts, but will also stimulate more traffic out of all airports in the region." We have several key transportation milestones in this community's history. You know, you start looking at, at the development of the railroad, the United, the Union Pacific 1867, and that, that changed Salina. You look at the interstate highway system, building of I-70, I-135, that changed the character and the economics of Salina, and having true dual hub, United Airlines branded service, and the convenience and the fares, connections worldwide through two hub airports, has, has a chance to truly change the economic outlook and growth for our community. Before you is a proposed letter of findings for the preference of this community for air service. The vote by this elected body has a, is one of the five significant, five significant factors considered by the U.S. DOT in their selection of the air carrier for 2018 to 2020. Would like to also let you know that the city of Hayes, the city council in Hayes, they met, I believe, was Thursday night, they voted unanimously to support this type of service pattern. So Hayes, Kansas, and the sees the benefits, and it's a partnership and a collaboration with a regional partner in Hayes and Ellis County. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have, and certainly do recommend adoption, approval of the letter as drafted and submitting it to the U.S. DOT.
Questions?
On the annual subsidy, is it, I'm looking at the, on the, on our blue sheet chart, that last chart you gave us, $2,995.87, is that, is this a two-year deal?
It's an annual subsidy.
Is it, is the annual, is the current one $1,999?
Excuse me?
Is the current one 1.99?
$2 million.
Roughly two?
It is.
Okay.
If I may just add, in reference, and to other bids already awarded to SkyWest Airlines and other Kansas and Nebraska communities, SkyWest was awarded bids for North Platte, Scotts Bluff, Liberal Kansas. The lowest bid is like 3.2 million, 3.4 million. Liberal was almost $1 million over this bid. So this proposal, this subsidy required, reflects the market is healthy, not as much subsidy is required, and what we, with a service pattern like this, we can reasonably expect that in two years, with passenger growth, with the forecast numbers, that less subsidy would be needed in the future.
One of the things I, that I've heard recently, is one of the things that hurt us from an economic development perspective, was that we didn't have nonstop flights to Denver. We have them now, but under this arrangement, it won't be a nonstop to Denver, it'll be a stopover in Hayes.
It'll stop in Hayes, and, and, but in the proposal, SkyWest reserves the right to convert those non, those direct flights, or flying over Hayes, to nonstops. And so you, there has to be a point that the air carrier does manage risk and does make that adjustment. This is the start, and, but I think the community, you weigh out all the other factors, regional jet service, fully branded United, United Express service, that one stop is acceptable, and knowing you're going to grow the market, and, and then very probably convert those to nonstops.
So you don't think that'll in any way stunt whatever momentum we have towards?
I don't believe so, because, again, I look at travelers who, for example, anybody who travels Southwest Airlines to a great, great degree, is, is, knows that many of these flights are direct, you will fly from, it may be Kansas City to St. Louis, and then to destination. It is not uncommon, and, and it, but it, it is not a deterrent, I believe, because of the upgrade in the level of service that the passengers will be receiving. There will be less reason to travel to other airports to get the same type of level of service that will be here. Salina becomes, and Salina Regional Airport, for our trade region, becomes the airport of convenience here, instead of flying, driving to other communities.
I like that, I, I do say I like sort of that handshake, the workout between Hayes and here, because it is a Hayes to Salina to Chicago.
Right.
It's kind of the flip, flip side of that coin. And when I look at the numbers at Hayes, Hayes looks like they have two and a half times the enplanements that we have, I mean, they have quite a bit of traffic that's going out of there. So that, that could be quite a bit coming through here, which, which may end up helping our Chicago. Now, is there the possibility that the reverse happens there, is that they have the option to bypass Salina on the way to Chicago if we don't?
That is not part of the SkyWest proposal. That is not what SkyWest is proposing.
So we will, so that is something that we will kind of be sure that we'll, we'll maintain, that?
Again, I will never, in the airline industry, you never can ever guarantee everything's going to stay the same. It changes so quickly, that at the present time, the SkyWest proposal and their intent is the two flights, daily flights over Hayes, and then the one flight to get started to Chicago nonstop.
Okay. And then just my last question, because it has to do with Great Lakes serving out through March.
Right.
Is there any anticipation whatsoever, we might be in the same deal we were last time when we have an interruption in service?
It's possible. Carney, Nebraska, Scotts Bluff, and North Platte are going through interruption of service at the present time, as is Liberal Kansas, from a air carrier, Penn Air, that ceased operations there. Contractually, Great Lakes, it is to their advantage to finish out the contract, it's to their financial advantage to do so, and they, I expect they'll make every effort to finish their obligation, but we have let the U.S. Department of Transportation know that time is of the essence for the selection, that if there is a stumble, if by Great Lakes, that allows SkyWest to start earlier, not April 1st, but if they have crew and aircraft available, they can actually start early.
Okay.
So we would be making those contingencies, be planning for that possibility as a contingency. Got to remember, I just got to also say that, you know, the decision today, an expression of preference, is goes to the U.S. DOT, it's one of their, one of their five factors that they evaluate on, but it's still a U.S. DOT decision. So we really don't know the final schedule and the final, you know, flying pattern until the U.S. DOT gives, does the selection, and they, they do a selection order, and they approve the service pattern, but we're asking for this service pattern that we're discussing today.
Okay, and all the equipment is regional jet?
It's all regional jet. That's all SkyWest flies is regional jets.
This is a little larger, though, is it not?
What's that?
This is a little larger.
That's a 50-seat regional jet.
The other was 35, wasn't it?
30-seat, yeah, the, 30-seat turboprop is what?
Glad to see if we can get that to, to have a flight to Chicago, I think that would be helpful to a lot of people in the community.
Right, it, yeah, it is, just with this service pattern, and with sharing an airplane, two flights a day to Denver and to Chicago, again, this increases the number of potential connections for Salina travelers by 144%. So we start filling seats, the air carrier, and there's the demand there, the air carrier will make the change, because they have the crews, they have the aircraft, they have the ability to make the change, and they've indicated in their proposal, when they say we reserve the right to convert a one-stop in Hayes to a nonstop, what they're saying, we see the demand, we're going to carry the passengers.
Do you think the fares are going to be comparative to?
The fares will be comparable to any United fare that's in our market now. Again, we're changing from Great Lakes as a limited, partial United co-chair partner, so all the fares that are in place for United right now, spoke to an individual who flew to Idaho for a family wedding, and they flew out of Salina, it was on a United fare, a United ticket, Great Lakes, United ticket to Denver, Denver on United, there's, that fare stays the same. SkyWest has a local fare in the market between Hayes and Denver, so they can price some of their own seats, and so that will stay the same. But what will change is that, that, again, you'll have, we have a big part of our market drives to Wichita. For the same type of service, same type of fares, there's no reason to drive to Wichita with this service in place. So the air carrier is aware of all the fares and all the numbers, they will manage the seats so that they keep the traffic here in, at this airport.
Just one, real quick, there's just one flight to Chicago from Salina a day.
That is the proposed schedule, the, and that schedule is illustrative. Right now, it takes after a contract selection and a contract is awarded to the air carrier, then the air carrier can go in and make final commitments from, on, on schedule, and final. So that's illustrative, but that's the commitment, is one flight to get started. Other communities have started with one flight to a hub, and then gone to two and three. They've gone, started with two flights to a hub and gone to three. So there's always a starting point to get started, and it, it's not, what the optimum schedule would be, maybe two flights to one hub and three flights to the other. That could come in time, you got it, you need to start at some point. And one comment about this Chicago schedule proposal, United Airlines had to give their preliminary okay for that. That departure time that is seen right now would enable Salina area residents to arrive for one of the largest banks that departs Chicago O'Hare every day. That's the last big bank at, in the, in the evening, that gets passengers to the east coast, all along the east coast, opens up the whole east coast, the northeast, the Atlantic coast, all the way down to Florida, for all those flights that leave Chicago in that early evening.
And that, that was going to be the second half of the question, that's already been factored into that time.
Yes, that is. That, this is optimized to hit the made, the banks out of, meet the banks, departing banks out of Denver two times a day, really hitting, I mean, really getting too much into the weeds here, but right now, the, the Great Lakes schedule, they pushed that flight back to depart to 8:30, they started at like 7:00 a.m., and now it's back to 8:30. Right now, we're missing half the banks, the departures at Denver, because now the flight leaves at 8:30 in the morning, and not at 6:30 or 7:00 a.m. This is what this schedule does, that's what SkyWest does, they maximize revenue by proper scheduling.
Is Manhattan American?
Manhattan is American Eagle.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Are they still doing Chicago?
They are.
Okay.
They have Chicago and, and Dallas-Fort Worth.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Good questions, thank you.
Public comments? Judy?
I'm glad to hear something, come on up to the microphone. Judy. Judy Larson, South 10th. I have to catch a flight, a United flight, out of Kansas City at 6:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. So would you recommend that I fly out of Salina, or just schlep over to Kansas City and, and pick it up there directly? Because I couldn't find anything on the website that gave me scheduling information or anything like that. 6:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, out of Kansas City.
I think right now, you'd have to go, if you went from Salina, you'd have to go to Denver and then go wherever you were going, because that's all we have right now.
And that would be a little crazy.
Yeah, probably wouldn't work.
All right, thank you.
Bring back to the commission for action.
Madam Mayor, I move we authorize mayor and city manager to jointly sign the attached letter communicating to the United States Department of Transportation the city of Salina's preferred airline selection under the Essential Air Service Program.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to authorize myself and city manager to jointly sign the attached letter communicating the United States Department of Transportation the city of Salina's preferred airline selection under the Essential Service Program. Questions?
Question. Is this a, is this typically a buy, a two-year, is it, does this continue on to a two-year deal? Is that?
It is typical, the U.S. DOT, the U.S. DOT's practice is for a two-year contract award, and, but in the case of, most cases, if the carrier is doing well, performing to expectations, then the community, you know, has a chance in two years to express that preference to retain the carrier. But in this case, I mean, the, the SkyWest proposal, doing business as United Express is so far superior, that it just outshines, you know, what we currently have. But yes, it'll be in two years, we would go through the same, similar type of selection.
Okay. Could we hope that this service enhancement, as it goes forward, might put us in a position to be flying to Texas or Dallas? Does this carrier go there, or?
You'll find, if you find, I should have put up the route map for SkyWest, they fly to every major hub in the United States. And so I would, I would like to say that I'd be optimistic that two years from now, or sometime during this service period, that, that the response is so good, that the air carrier is interested and may be doing, continuing the service to, and opening up other, other options. But I'll be cautiously optimistic, let's fill the seats on this proposal first.
Right.
Demonstrate that the, that truly the demand is there. I think you will find that our business community, individuals who have personal travel, and those that are coming into our community to do business, and are going to fill those seats very quickly, and I think we're going to see that. Then there's something to discuss as we update the true market demand, and we see where we may want to go next. Do we do that with frequency to the two hubs that we're going to, or we do it like we're doing now, defining there's another hub that really helps us, and we defined Chicago's it, and the air carrier responded with a proposal that is just, that none of the other communities in Nebraska or Kansas have received. This market, this community received this proposal from SkyWest, not Carney, not North Platte, not Scotts Bluff, and not Liberal. So they see a potential here.
Thank you, thank you. And also want to congratulate you on your Hall of Fame Award. I wasn't able to come that day, but congratulations, you deserve it.
I don't know, but.
You do. I have a motion and a second to authorize the signage of the attached letter communicating to the United States Department of Transportation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item 7.8.
Resolution Number 17-7489, determining the advisability in authorizing sanitary sewer improvements in the vicinity of Markley Road, and costs for such improvements paid by special assessments and benefit fees. in the vicinity of Markley Road and costs for such improvements paid by special assessments and benefit fees.
Martha.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, the attached petition was submitted by city residents in October of 2017 requesting sanitary sewer improvements to serve 13 residential lots in the Valley View addition. Currently, they're served by septic tanks and a tract of land at the northeast corner of Markley and Magnolia Road. Uh, these properties represent the only properties that are currently annexed into the city and liable for the assessments. Um, it's prescribed by Kansas statutes that the city commi- commission consider a petition for sanitary sewer improvements if certain conditions are met. In this case, the petition is signed by a majority of the resident owners of property of record, uh, of the property liable for these assessments. Uh, currently, eight of the 13 property owners in the Valley View area signed the petition and the property owner at the northwest corner of, uh, Markley and Magnolia Roads. The Slayton County Treasurer has indicated there are no delinquent special assessment taxes on any property within the city limits owned by these petitioners. Um, the preliminary engineering report was attached and it described the scope of the project. It also defined the improvements and it identified the property ownership and the distribution of costs to these property owners. Approximately 11 percent of the project costs are proposed to be assessed to the improvement district, which is within the city limits, and 89 percent to be paid by the city at large for properties that will benefit from this sewer system sometime in the future but are currently not in the city limits. Uh, whenever a property owner outside the city limits requests to be served by the improvements, they will annex into the city and then they will be assessed the, the benefit fees for their fair share of the sewer system. Uh, the property owners within the improvement district or that are, will be paying the specials may choose to pay their share of the project as a lump sum payment or pay it over a 15-year period. Uh, resolution number 13 dash 7055 speaks to the installation of public improvements with special assessments financing. And it notes that the city commission may move a project forward without a financial security when it's deemed to be in the public in, interest. And in this case, the benefit district is in multiple ownership and the majority of the land therein is, already has developed principal buildings on it. I would like to note that on October 16th, Dr. De Turk and Mr. Hancock were at our city commission meeting and noted that they wanted to move into the current century and get away from, uh, septic tanks and have a public sewer connection. So, I, I didn't see them here today, so I wanted to make note of that. We did send a letter to all of the property owners in this area who are in the improvement district, make them aware of this being a city commission item today. So, just wanted to give them a chance if they wanted to come and speak with us. Um, 11 percent of the estimated cost of the total project, which the total project is roughly 2.25 million, 11 percent or roughly 250,000 is to be assessed against the improvement district. The remaining 89 percent or approximately $2 million, uh, cost will be paid by the city at large. The project will be temporarily financed through a temporary note and rolled into long-term bonds in 2018. Or we may utilize the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, uh, which we have received, uh, a letter from KDHE that, uh, in January, uh, we would be eligible for this funding should we choose to go forward. And just to note, a professional archaeologist may need to conduct a site survey then. I needed to be able to say that word since I couldn't say it earlier. So, state revolving fund may have that. So, now I've been able to say it, so I feel better, thank you. And, uh, that's, being tongue-tied is kind of an embarrassing thing to have. You know, for some reason, that word was not there for me. Staff has identified the following options, approve resolution number 17 dash 7489, determining the advisability and authorizing the sanitary sewer improvements in the vicinity of Markley Road and Magnolia Road and the cost for such improvements to be paid by special assessments and benefit fees. Uh, the second option is to not adopt resolution number 17 dash 7489 and give further direction to staff. Staff recommends option one. This time, I would be glad to answer any questions about this project that you might have.
One, is the 89/11 split just a historical figure that's been passed down? Or was there a science behind that?
Um, in the, um, document, there's a, a preliminary engineering report and it basically looks at all the costs for this project and then it's allocated by square foot to the particular pieces of property. So, it's a, a mathematical calculation based on square footage and based on, uh, our current preliminary estimate of cost for the project. Did that hit your question or was it?
Or the split between the, the city at large paying obviously a much larger share than the persons who are going to benefit from it?
That basically has to do with the location of this, uh, facility. When we started this project, maybe 10-plus years ago, we looked at, um, there was a need for additional sewer pump stations and there could have been up to four wastewater pump stations installed to handle this area. So, we did a, an evaluation, uh, at that time, it was Booker &amp; Willis or now Lochner, to evaluate whether it makes more sense to look at this entire area and, and provide one lift station for this and then to develop the area for a sewer system for the entire area. So, that's, that was the initial beginning part, which leaves a large portion of this property in the county. So, normally, I don't believe we'd ever have a split quite this, this large. So, this is very unusual if, if I got to the heart of your question.
Yeah. There's, there's cost recovery for the rest of it. But what Martha's saying is the, the immediate users of the line would be to the very north in the region. If you look at Exhibit A, you'll see that. And, but to, to move it in order to eliminate the lift stations she's talking about and to combine it, you have to go all the way down basically to Magnolia. And so, most of the, the acreage, and it's called Area 1, most of it is in Area 1, is undeveloped at this time. But in time, that may develop, and in that time, then it's collected back in, so, uh, through a different mechanism. But that's, that's a good part of that split.
So, that cost recovery is not, it, it will be if ever, unless it just actually never gets developed.
Right. And, yeah, the objective is, is-
But it will be, it's not like a deferred special assessment where it can expire.
Actually, consent, the special assessments can expire, but a deferred special assessment can take two forms and either one ends up being payable at the time that there's benefit.
But this, this has a true cost recovery component to it, so it's not ever the city, truly city at large, um, in the long run.
The, the 89 percent represents the area that's outside the city limits and not able to be subject to special assessments on day one. It, if, in the resolution, it calls it out as 12 6A19, which is another form of special assessment, which is deferred special assessment for property outside the city limits. At the point that they would connect to the system and benefit, they would owe a catch-up payment at whatever point we are in the special assessment financing, and then they would be subject to annual special assessments from that point forward.
Okay.
Be similar to what would be proposed for the area near the shooting range? In a, in a way, I mean, those-
Yeah, and, and-
Say different.
Yeah, it is.
It's a little different in terms of the authority, but essentially, yes. They, the, the cost incurred by the city would be recovered at the point that they benefit from the service.
In result, we recover the cost, but a different mechanism of getting to that point.
Right. Yeah, the, the point is not to leave this area open that, and when it develops, there would be no cost and that we wouldn't be able to, uh, collect, uh, the proportionate share of the cost of the line. It's in that, in essence, that there would be a cost proportionally allocated. And it's a mixture of tools to get there because of the inside the city limits and outside the city limits issue. So, uh, when they do develop, they would have to pay their proportionate share. And assuming this all develops in time, then the city would be paid for. And in likelihood, it's going to take quite a long time to do that. And so, the biggest benefit, because we know we have to get from north to south, which is the best place to discharge it back into our system, um, the biggest benefit that we get other than providing one of our neighborhoods with sewer that didn't already have it, uh, is really on the reduction of the amount of lift stations total.
Yeah, there's currently two existing lift stations that will be, uh, removed out of service when this new station goes in service. Originally, it was driven by Valley View and the need for a pump station to be able to, uh, put in a public sewer system. And then, as we started looking at the overall area, we had several others, uh, one in Magnolia Hills that was, is currently in there in a temporary situation, waiting for us to complete this sewer line and make that connection and take it out of service. And, uh, they call me on a regular basis, anxious to, to sell me an existing station and be out of the pump station business. They've determined it's, uh, not as fun as it looks. Takes a lot of maintenance and work to keep it in place.
From a fis- from the fiscal note on this, what, what determines whether or not the temporary notes are converted into lo- into GO bonds or the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund? And, and how does the fact that 11 percent of these are individual benefit and not city at large?
Yeah, I think the, the, the big aspect of that, you also have revenue bonds as an option. Um, the big aspect is as we get closer to needing to put in place permanent financing, we can look at all of the tools, look at the interest rates, look at the applicability, and then put in front of you those choices and try to recommend the tool that's the best tool for that, uh, for the bonding. And that's what we would like, in all likelihood, would do.
Okay. Are, are those two other options available when we do, in general, a special assessment financing on other?
Well, no, that's a good, that's a good point. And, um, yeah, I spoke on special assessments. I believe general obligation bonds are the, the tool that we have to use because there's specific, specifically related to that tool in the statute. If we were looking at other forms of cost recovery, then we do have the other option. So, that's correct with, uh, special assessments.
Okay. Because I mean, that was part of that, that I thought I was reading in here, the part-
Yeah, that's correct.
Parts, parts. Okay, so would, is there, would GO bond, would we need to finance some of those long-term with GO bonds? And so, my question is, is doesn't every time we do a GO bond issue, trigger a ratings?
Yeah, now, okay, let's take a look at this again. We, we have the temporary financing through the temporary note. And then, again, we have, we can roll into the long-term bonds in 18 or the loan agreement. So, the bonds would be the GO bonds. Um, we do have the loan agreement option as well. We may not have the revenue bonds. I, actually, I'd want to heavily sit down with our finance folks, uh, to see if we have that option or not for sure. A revenue bond wouldn't put the burden on the general obligation debt is, I think, is a concern and potentially the rating, uh, for general obligation debt. But it would come in at a, could come in at a little bit of a higher interest rate. The loan fund, on the other hand, might come in at a lower interest rate and also relieve the, uh, overall general obligation debt burden. So, it may in the end be the, the best option for us.
Because I see a whole lot of temp notes lining up that we might have to have GO bonds on and getting real nervous about, about going out and getting those rated.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree. Especially as we've talked about a lot of the bigger projects coming up. And these, this seems small in comparison, but they do all add up. And especially when you then look at the bigger projects, you have to take all that in mind.
Well, this is still 2 million, you know, 2, 2 and 1/2 million or whatever, so, still substantial.
Commissioner, when we started this process, we, we had, we'd submitted our application for the loan agreement, but just in the last couple of days, I, I got the letter that says we're lined up to receive, uh, funding in January. So, initially, we weren't sure whether we would be on the list to get the state revolving loan fund dollars. And, um, we have some effort to work through with the bond council and how that works with the, uh, state revolving loan fund. It's not something that, uh, they have had a lot of involvement with. So, we got some details to work out, but it sounded like it was a possible alternative that we-
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that would be-
Better interest rate, so, that's what we're-
Yeah, some of those just may end up being preferable in, in the long run.
Yeah, I, I conferred with the legal counsel who'd spoken to, or bond counsel, which is where you really get the answer for that question.
Right.
And, uh, our bond counsel had indicated, uh, without question, the loan, the revolving loan fund is an applicable tool for financing that we do have. We don't know for sure if revenue bonds would be a tool, but certainly, as we get closer, we can evaluate and determine. And revenue bonds may or may not be the tool we'd want to go with anyway. But I think making sure we evaluate all tools that are, could potentially be on the table is in our best interest. So, we'll definitely address that tool as well. But we know that the revolving loan fund is, is a tool and it might be the best.
How do the, how do interest rates line up between a revolving loan fund and, and GO bonds? What, what, any, are they comparable or?
Well, um, when we looked at the, uh, earlier, the, uh, South Water Treatment Plant, bonds were in the rate of, range of 4 percent and the state revolving loan fund is currently 2.17. They look at three months and it's kind of a rolling average. So, it's a considerable difference, uh, when even, you know, 32 million, obviously, it's a lot larger. But like you said, this is over 2 million. So, that's a project that we can definitely save some dollars over, over the timeframe. So, it's, it's favorable to move that way. We just didn't know whether we were going to get on the list.
Yeah, and I think when you compare that, you, of course, you had the revenue bond on the GO bond. The last time we issued, I believe we were just a little under 3, we were in the high 2s. So, even that compared to, say, a 2.1, assuming that holds, is a pretty good spread still. So, revolving loan fund is a pretty good tool for, for this type of financing if it's available.
Okay, any other questions? Any public comment? Thank you, Martha.
Just a real quick, just, just a quick question, this for, for Jason, on the, um, benefit district. Because I was looking through there and, and of course, some of the residents signed it and some of them didn't. Um, is that the case where if a certain number within the benefit district does all pay?
Yeah, typically, it takes more than 50 percent. I'll look at their experts on the benefit districts. But typically, it takes more than 50 percent to officially allow you to establish a benefit district. I don't, I'd have to look at Greg and Mike to see if there are any, um, other aspects of this one in place.
And then do the, is the, is the special assessment, the benefit cost spread over the 15 years to each resident, is that the total cost to them or are they still required to pay a connection fee?
Oh, that's a good question. I think they was, well, I'll have Martha, uh, address that.
This is the total cost to them to, to connect. They would, they would have their own cost for their plumber to, to do the piping from their septic tank to the, this tap we left for them, but-
So, they'd be responsible for curb to-
The service connection, they would be responsible for this?
Right.
Okay.
And, um, and each property owner will be required to connect on once, uh, the sewer is in place.
But it does include a connection fee?
Yes, there's no additional cost for, for the connection.
Okay.
Okay. And if there's no other questions, bring back to commission for action.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 17 dash 7489, determining the advisability and authorizing sanitary sewer improvements in the vicinity of Markley Road and Magnolia Road and costs for such improvements paid by special assessments and benefit fees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, um, approve resolution 177489. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. No development business, other business? I have some other business.
I, I do too.
Okay, do you want to go ahead with yours?
Okay, sure. Um, the first thing I'd like to do, and I'm sorry, I think I saw Fire Chief Royce here earlier, is I wanted to thank him for the, uh, the information memorandum that, um, he sent and to specifically recognize, um, the Salina Fire Department personnel that went down to Houston from August 30th through September 3rd to help with, um, rescue and evacuation efforts, um, down there. And he has personnel listed as Training Chief Mark Groslund, Lieutenant Kendall Johnson, and firefighters Tate Walker, Chris Stansberry, and Fire Inspector Joe Kvaszek, if I said that right. But at any rate, I just wanted to, um, thank those firefighters for, um, making themselves available and for making the trip down to, to Houston to, to give aid. And then I just had one other quick, quick item. Um, I wanted to welcome and recognize, um, future Commissioner Joe Hay, who's in the audience here, uh, this evening, and, um, also to welcome, um, future Commissioner Mike Hoppick and to encourage, um, staff to keep them apprised in terms of our upcoming- And to encourage staff to keep them apprised in terms of our upcoming agenda planner. We have Senator Randall Hardy joining us for a study session on November 27th, and it would probably be a really good opportunity for our two new commissioners to get some insights from our representative.
We also are going to contact Senator Hardy, if he's comfortable with that too, to see if the, if any of the other of our local representatives are available as well. They may be able to give you some insight and invite them as well. So it'd give you the ability to really get insight from everyone's perspective and hopefully help you, help us as a city align ourselves before the legislative session begins.
Okay, I do have an other business topic. We, as commission, passed a well-thought-out code of ethics policy this year, and I believe I would be remiss, as your mayor, if I didn't pursue the topic. It became quite clear that one of our commissioners violated the public trust of our commission by releasing city commission information. That was created with the expectation of confidentiality. I believe it was motivated by the election. Motivation doesn't matter, really. It happened, and I just think the topic needs to be discussed and the possibility of some action taken. But before anyone says anything, I think I need to caution you all that the items that Mr. Blanchard released were created with confidentiality, and those should not be mentioned. The subject matter of the discussion is not what the breach was, but the matter is to discuss whether or not we should take any kind of action under our ethics policy. We do have an ethics policy, and that's what we developed it for. And I'll leave it up to the commission.
Would you like to propose an action, Mayor?
Mayor, I'd agree with that. I mean, I think items that are created in confidentiality ought to remain in there. I have client privileges with my people that I work with, and we keep strict privacy. And I'm sure that Dr. Davis can speak to the medical patient confidentiality. The public trust, we've all stood down here and taken an oath to represent this city as a city commission, and we have the ethics policy as well, which very clearly tells us that our first place is to protect the public trust of the city and not intentionally act outside that scope. So I'm hoping that we can get at this quickly with a conversation. If we could place it on the agenda this evening as an action item, I'd like to see it get behind us as quick as possible, but that would take four votes of the commission to add it as an agenda item. But I think that would be the preferable way to go.
Just speaking, just speaking for myself, in terms of tying this to the ethics policy that we've established this year, I'd want a chance to be able to take a look at the ethics policy and think about it. I wish I, I wish I could say that I'm a quick thinker, but I'm not. I'm a long thinker. And I would like to have the opportunity to refresh my memory in terms of how this would relate to our ethics policy, as well as the documents that were released, and that would be my preference.
The policy was adopted on, by the Board of Commissioners on June 19th of this year.
I asked for something. Don't imagine you happen to have five copies of the policy with you, right?
I don't.
Is there a specific section, subsection?
Yeah, I do have it pulled up now on my iPad. It's on our webpage, so if you have questions, I think I can, if you have a, would like us to read a section or read something, we could certainly do that.
I mean, is there a?
That's a good question. I suppose we could.
Is there, just procedure, is there a particular section that we're addressing?
Well, yes, under general ethical principles, under, well, A, public trust, E.
Would you please read that?
E is do not disclose or use inform.
A.
A is place the public trust and interests of the city first, and never intentionally act outside the scope of authority prescribed by one's official duties. E is do not disclose or use information received in the course of performing one's duties that is to be maintained in confidence. And 1, by rule, regulation, or directive in the case of an employee. Or 2, by the intent of the governing body in the case of a governing body member. Or 3, by the intent of the applicable board in the case of a member of a board. And treat all persons with courtesy and respect. So, I mean, we have an ethics policy, and, you know, I would feel remiss if I didn't bring it to the attention of the public and give everybody a chance to say something.
If the commissioners would feel more comfortable to put it as an agenda item next week, then we could put it out there. I just thought it's a pretty, I think the evidence is there that it's a pretty open and shut case, that, you know, we could just act on it and make it go away.
I don't know if I can ask this question. I mean, if I can't, obviously, once I ask, it's too late. But does this action have anything to do with the determination of whether or not the documents that were released were considered confidential documents? Did we establish that? Or has that been established?
Who wasn't aware of it doesn't.
Right, I don't know how much I can ask.
It's just the action.
I think there's one document in question right now with regards to that, I believe. I don't want to speak on behalf of the mayor or any of you, but I believe there's just one document in question. I could be wrong, but it's, it's probably more of a question than it is a response.
I just, I felt that anything that the commission releases should be in agreement by the whole commission, not just one commissioner. And that's, and that's the way I believe the policy reads.
Okay. Is everybody done? Because I would actually like to address this.
Certainly.
Okay. First of all, I find it quite interesting that we, all of a sudden, have situational ethics. So I would like to say kudos for a couple of you to finally.
That's not situational.
Would you like the floor back? Okay. So, anyway, to answer the, to answer the charges, I'm not sure exactly what action you propose to take, Vice Mayor, but I can tell you, I'd be more than happy to have a full and open public discussion about not only breaches in ethics that you feel occurred on this case, but ones that have occurred on this board, and in going back to times when members of this board were on other boards, I'd like to have a full public airing of those ethical breaches. Okay? Second of all is, and I think it's instructive for people to know, that I have made my own requests for public records because, quite frankly, I do not agree, nor have I ever agreed with the fact that any of those documents contain any information that should have been kept secret from the public. The problem is, is that we have gone on for four years with a festering problem with the Chamber of Commerce because we chose not to be honest with the public as to why we discontinued the relationship that we had with the Chamber of Commerce. That is a fact. And in fact, if I could read into a letter that we received from the Chamber of Commerce on January 23rd, 2014, and I might add, it's my understanding that this is a fully public record with no confidentiality whatsoever.
Mr. Blanchard, the situation here is not.
No.
You entering this information, you've changed the subject matter.
No, I'm not.
The subject matter here is, did you breach an item that was intended to be kept confidential? And that's all the farther that I wanted to see this taken. In my opinion, you've opened yourself up to litigation by others, and the city needs to wall itself off from you because we don't condone these acts. By allowing you to do this, we condone your acts, and we're going to be held accountable for these actions. Second, what guarantee do we have that you're not going to release more things in the, in the future? How can I go into an executive session over there and not know that John Blanchard's not going to take something out of that session? And it sets a horrible example for future, for future commissioners, and I think that if we don't, at this point, make recognition of this and censor you or something appropriate that acknowledges your action.
You just go ahead and do whatever you need to do. Then you go ahead and do whatever you feel like you need to do.
It won't go away.
You do what you need to do, but I want to ask council, is there legal exposure to releasing a public record? Or is it privileged on the part of this commission to do that? Because Commissioner Ryan just made a very serious accusation that somehow I led this board to some sort of exposure. Do you care to answer that?
I'll have to answer that in this way, Commissioner. This is an example of the divergence of interest that occurs when ethical questions are raised at the level of the city commission. And no, I cannot address that. That is why the policy anticipates that if legal counsel is necessary to sort through these, that it does need to be someone other than a lawyer associated with Clark Meislinville.
Okay. Well, I would, I would encourage the Vice Mayor and the mayor to take whatever action they need to, to place something on an agenda. I am more than happy to do that. I have not at any time said that I did not release that information. In fact, you know what I could have very easily done? I could have very easily released that information anonymously. Now, did I do that? No, because I very specifically released that because, you know what? I was at a crossroads of whether or not, and I was fully aware of what was in that, what was in that ethics policy. I was also fully aware of the oath of office I took. And quite frankly, I found odds with keeping secrets that shouldn't have been kept from the community at a bigger odd with my personal ethics than anything that was in that policy. So quite frankly, if you think that it's, that it's purely proper to keep secrets that shouldn't be kept secret, then by all means, you continue to keep those secrets. But quite frankly, there wasn't anything in that document that was harmful to this city that was put out there. Not one, not one thing. And quite frankly, there are other letters. And quite, would you like to, anybody like to see the letter before I read it? Because it goes to the crux of why I think that a lot of this was a lot to do about nothing.
I appreciate the commissioner's opinion, but it is just an opinion, and I think, once again, you're off the substance of the conversation.
I didn't, listen, I didn't.
I understand you've got personal problems, and I think those are for you to deal with, but quite frankly, they aren't the business of this city commission.
But you brought it up.
I brought up what you did that hurt the city commission.
Did it hurt the city?
It hurts the city. It hurts our staff's ability to go forward, to work with other people when things that are done in confidence can't be kept in confidence? And that's just a wrong action, and it shouldn't happen again. I would like to hope that it won't happen again.
Letter from January 23rd, 2014, to the city manager, from Dennis Lovren, Dale Heisel, City Chamber of Commerce.
This really isn't the appropriate place to read those letters.
Yes, this is.
I asked, I asked that those things be kept quiet and that this, just discussion, just be on the fact that.
This is an open public letter. This is an open public document.
That you didn't follow our code of ethics. That's all I asked.
Okay.
And that you put it on your website, and everybody saw it, and it was before the election, and it seemed to me to be, you know, I don't know that much about it.
I'm not running for election, Mayor. I'm not running for election.
I know, but your friends were, so.
But you know what? My name, my name was a course of conversation in this, in this election by two people, actually by three people, that were running.
Those are all personal circumstances that have nothing to do with the Salina City Commission. You stepped outside of your bounds when you took your personal interests beyond this commission.
Well, I tell you what, I'm glad you found a voice. I am glad you finally found a voice.
And I am glad you're proving yourself to be the bully. And it goes to the point here about treat all persons with courtesy and respect at all times.
Right, yeah. Because nobody's ever.
It is also a part of our ethic.
Nobody should ever defend themselves. And nobody should ever stand up for the truth. And that's what the problem, you know what? This community has a culture of secrecy. And I think that's what, I think that's really what got you speaking now, is that somebody's finally called you under secrecy.
I think you are the only person that thinks we have a culture of secrecy.
I know we do, obviously. Otherwise, let's release the document. You guys were asked to go ahead and release the documents. It's our privilege to release, and they don't harm the city. They don't harm the city at all. Why don't you release the documents? Because you know why?
The issue is that you did not allow this commission.
Please, one at a time, please.
To let you do that. You did it on your own.
Yeah, you didn't ask any of the rest of the commission. I didn't know anything about it, and I know being mayor is sort of an honorarium-type job, but I didn't know anything about it until I happened to look up on your website and saw all that information and was astounded that you released it. And went back to my code of ethics that you had, you proposed that we do, and you went back to that, and I can see many kinds of things that, many places that you intentionally changed to benefit yourself.
I did not intentionally change a thing.
The obvious disconnect is why Commissioner Blanchard thinks that he is above the ethics policy that was so close to his heart in the drafting, and yet you feel you're above that.
Is there a? I'm probably going right off the rails here, but one thing that I have the benefit of is I wasn't here in 2014. And so I'm looking at this both from the benefit of hindsight and the benefit of not being directly involved in the whole decision not to renew the Chamber of Commerce's economic development contract. I wish, you know, hindsight being what it is, I wish at that time, we could have just come clean and been honest about what our reasons were for not continuing that, that contract. It's not personal. It's not, it's, it doesn't disparage anyone. It lays out facts that I wish that we could reference in all of these letters. And it's been my position from the beginning that I would have liked to have seen this correspondence released during the election, whether that was in a candidate's forum or whether it was on a radio show. This topic was referenced again and again and again. And it would sure be wonderful if we all had the benefit, like I did, of reading through this correspondence. Do I wish we would have had a conversation about this before Commissioner Blanchard put it up? Yeah, that would have been nice, but the, but the bottom, the bottom line for me is, is whenever, you know, we, we keep things like these secret or we, you know, I know we're a small community, but we do, we have to expect a certain level of professionalism in the, the business entities that we contract with. And, you know, if Martha came to us and said, and I don't mean to drag you in this, Martha, but said that we were not happy with the way a sewer contract was fulfilled, I assume that she'd be able to say, they went over budget, they used substandard materials, this, this, and this. And it would be a matter of public record. I don't look at this as a shaming. I look at this as just, here's what happened, let's deal with it, let's move on to the next thing. But in order to discuss this vis a vis the ethics policy, I'm still going to say I would need to take, I'd need to have the opportunity to take a look at that and think about this very seriously, because frankly, I'd like to just drop this off with Tim on my way out today and just say, you know what? Go for it. Let's get it out there. Let's discuss it, and let's move on.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're not getting in the situation where the topic that we're discussing is such that the ends will justify the means. You know, for me here, the issue isn't, and I don't know whether we can discuss it in an open meeting, is whether or not the information released was considered confidential or not. And I'm asking more than giving an opinion, because then the issue is, was confidential information released, which I think is the only issue. I don't know that we can use the nature of the material to justify the action, because we're not discussing really the merits of the case. We're discussing, in this case, should the information... We're discussing, in this case, should the information on any topic have been released if it was a confidential document? And I don't know, obviously without discussing the document, if it was a confidential document, we shouldn't discuss it here in an open meeting. So I don't know if we can even further discussion without running in that room for a few minutes.
Well, I think the question is simple. Was it a confidential document?
Right. And...
I can answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
The position of the city was that the documents in question, or portions of them, were confidential. That is my understanding of what the position of the city was with regard to the document in question.
And the document, the portion that you received, you received some of these under the Open Records Act, or not? If so, you received redacted portions of it?
There were redacted documents, two and a half pages of a redacted document.
No. The redacted document is no longer considered, and this is a question, no longer considered confidential, or...
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you this. I believe that it's still redacted, so, I mean, you don't even have to answer that. My question all along, and as I said before...
I do need to answer that question.
Yes, let's get an answer.
I believe Commissioner Blanchard's characterization is correct. Whatever happened with the document, I don't think affects the position of the city with regard to that document. Does that answer your question?
So the redacted document is still considered confidential, or not?
Well, the redacted document was disclosed in the redacted form.
The Journal article of November 2nd says that unredacted copies were provided...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I should clarify the...
The full letter, the unredacted...
The redaction occurred in response to a request. Whether the redaction was correct under the Kansas Open Records Act and the city's position as to that redaction was based upon my analysis of the application of those exemptions to mandated disclosure. That is what precipitated the redaction.
So that redacted report that was released can be disclosed then, or still should not be?
Let me reword it and see if this helps you. The status of the correspondence in question that has redactions up until today is the same. So if a citizen said, hey, I'd like a copy of that particular correspondence, what we would provide, absent any other action or direction from a governing body, would be the redacted version.
Right. So that can be released? Or is that...
As long as the redactions are still in place, certainly, because the rest is considered open record for that purpose, and certainly that can be released.
Yeah. All right. Let me kind of just clear up a couple of things here.
The whole thing is that none of the rest of the commissioners who were involved with that whole process in 2014, and I was one of them...
And I was the only other one.
None of us, all of us at that time believed that to be confidential. So that, in fact, people's reputations didn't get hurt that were involved, names in those letters, that were in those letters, that those people maintained their reputations. That was my understanding. And we were not asked if it was all right with the rest of the commission if any of that was released. And that's what bothers me the most, is that we weren't...
Can I have the floor without interruption, please? Because, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of things are said, and a lot of countercharges and everything else. And quite frankly, you know, you guys were interrupting earlier, and I felt kind of rudely. So if I may, just kind of address sort of the main charge. Did I violate our ethics policy? The answer to that is yes. Okay? What exactly do you wish to do? Do you wish to censure me? Do you wish to, I mean, whatever you wish to do, I would ask that you make a motion to put that on the agenda, and let's do this. But I want to ask the attorney, is there like, is this a misdemeanor, or is this a felony? Or, I mean, what's, what kind of thing? I mean, I know that certain ethics violations of the Kansas Ethics Commission are misdemeanors. Is this a violation of the Kansas Ethics Commission? I mean, have I violated any statutes?
I believe I can answer that question without having any advisory aspect, in that the matter, as I would understand it, is strictly a function of your local policy. And as far as any, there are no criminal aspects to what we're speaking of.
Okay. But there are violations of the Kansas Ethics Commission statutes. They are violations, are misdemeanors and/or others. Is that correct? Are there other?
The, yes, there are elements of, you're speaking of the state, local government ethics...
Right, Chapter 43 or whatever that is.
Right. There are potential misdemeanor-level violations under that act, yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll just, we can wrap this up. If you want to make some motion, one of you guys, to put something on the agenda, I obviously sat here and said without any problem whatsoever that, yeah, I violated a section of the ethics policy that we have. But if we're going to start really calling one another out on violations of that, I've got a few avenues I'd like to take too, and I won't take our time this evening to do that. But I can assure you that at our next meeting, when everybody's present, I certainly will. So if you'd like to kind of make a motion, I'd be happy to second your motion.
Could I ask a question, which part you're claiming to have violated?
Whatever he's looking to do. My what now?
What part of the ethics rules, or whatever you call them, are you claiming to have violated?
Listen, I'm not looking to try to defend any of it. You can pick whichever ones you want. It really is not that critical to me. I don't have it in front of me. So I hadn't planned this, like some had, so...
Well, we talked about it in executive session.
Well, now you're going to tell everybody what we talked about in executive session?
Well, we...
What do we do there?
You have released all of the names of all the people that could very well be hurt by this whole thing.
Well, now, you just basically brought attention to the fact of why I want to open up the document, because the document doesn't hurt anybody.
Well, that's your opinion.
Well, I'll tell you what. I will reiterate the fact that I have, on my own, as a private citizen, filed an open records request, because quite frankly, I, if I get the same redactions, I may challenge those redactions, because I honestly do not feel like they are accurately applied. And that's what I'd like to get to the bottom of. We have three exemptions that we can take to redact documents. And we took those three redaction exceptions on all of those documents. And when the first one has to deal with personal records of employees, and the last one has to do with public records containing of a personal nature, I don't see how those fit into anything that we wrote into a letter on a public contract. And quite frankly, when the one that we do choose says that it shall not apply when records are publicly cited, this record has been publicly recited to death. This record, and whether or not people say, oh, we're going to agree to disagree, or this or the other, it was cited in the letter from the Chamber of Commerce to us stating that they didn't have a problem with it. And that's what that January 23rd, 2014 letter said. It says, "We got your letter of January 17th, 2014, and we agree with it, and thank you for the money. We cashed the check, and we've already put into place solutions and fixes to the problems that you addressed in the letter." And so that letter has been cited over and over and over publicly. It's been referenced in public meetings and on public agendas. We had the Chamber of Commerce come in and request funding for us, that we told them in another letter in November of 2014 that, you know what? You guys still, we're not going to do any more funding things with you guys if you can't take care of these problems. So, like I said, and I think Commissioner Hodges said it, is that, you know what? We get into problems when we keep secrets, and we make threats, and we don't do what we say we're going to do. And when we redact two and a half pages out of a six-page letter to do all of that, which quite frankly, those redactions, and Mayor, you and I were the only ones here at the time. Those were contractual nature, they weren't of a personal nature. There was nothing in those that had anything to do other than with performance and adherence to the standards of representation in the contract.
I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is that you've released this without going through the commission to do it. You took it upon yourself to do it.
Right, exactly.
And that's the problem.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we put this on the next agenda, and that acknowledging that Mr. Blanchard acknowledges a violation of our ethics conflict of interest statement, and that we try to hold the conversation to the specifics of that, whether the public trust was violated and the interests of the city were not kept first, and that things were disclosed and information, disclosed of information received, yeah, do not disclose information received in the course of performing one's duties. So that would be my motion to place it on the next agenda for discussion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, to place it on, place, I'm not going to go through all that, to put on the next agenda for next week. All those and...
Do we have a discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
First of all, Commissioner Davis will not be present, or will you be next week?
Monday I will.
You will be here Monday?
I will be, yes.
Okay. Then I'm fine with the date. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I'd like to add into that discussion actions taken by Commissioner Ryan that are in violation of the state ethics commission, as well for non-disclosure of substantial interest in acting on projects outside of the scope of the recusal process. And since we're going to be talking about ethics and violations thereof, so that's my amendment to add that to the discussion as well.
That would have to be...
That would have to be seconded.
It's a motion to amend the motion.
Mayor and Commissioners, on the amendment, we have the motion on the amendment. Now you need to act on the amendment, so you'd be looking for a second. And then if there's a second, a vote on the amendment. If the amendment carries, then it becomes part of the original motion, then you go back to the original motion. So you'd be looking for a second on that, on the amendment motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Take this up next week as an agenda item.
Well, specifically...
With John's inclusion as well, we've not voted on the amendment yet.
We have to vote on the amendment.
This is just the amendment that Commissioner Blanchard just made into a motion. That's the only thing you're going to vote on right now.
There's a motion in a second. All right. Okay, are you ready for the question?
We're ready to vote on the amendment.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Nay, no.
No.
Okay. I have a question, too, about the, what this discussion is going to be. Can we talk about what this letter was, or do we have to keep the letter in secrecy?
I would, I think things that were created with expectation of confidentiality should remain confidential.
Can we identify the letter?
Before you answer, does that question require that we meet with an attorney representing or counseling us, other than you, if this is not the proper area for you to advise us in?
Well, if I may, I hope this is helpful. And I appreciate Commissioner Blanchard mentioning his open records request, because I think it's hopefully helpful to sort out the questions that are in front of everyone. The request, the initial request, open records request, that prompted the redacted response. And this might be the time, if I may mention, and I think, hopefully, Commissioner Blanchard's and my working relationship is such that he knows that he's entitled to his opinion, and that I, in analyzing that question when it was presented to me, I took into consideration what I understood to be the desire of the client as this governing body as a whole, as it existed over time. And I take very seriously this matter of compliance from the standpoint of particularly open records and open meetings. So we have, I think, a difference of opinion as to how those exemptions applied in that particular case at that particular time. So we then now have the matter of properly responding to the pending open records request, and that is something that falls in that category, where I, given the circumstances, don't believe I can advise in relation to that request, and will be addressing that. The document, as Commissioner Blanchard's comments indicated, one of the bases for the initial redaction had to do with opinions expressed and recommendations made in the content of the redacted portions. That is exception number 20 under the listing of the, I think it's now 55 exemptions, and a whole host of others that appear in the rest of the statute. So it's, the, that exception has a qualifier. And that is, if the document is cited, or I'm paraphrasing a bit, it's cited or identified in a public meeting, that exception no longer applies. The best indication we have, the best guidance we have, there is an Attorney General's opinion, it's number 90-92, that there are a handful of those exceptions that have the same qualifier. And that opinion basically tells us that referring to the document does not, by basic identification, doesn't, isn't what is anticipated by the statute. That discussion of the content of the document is what is anticipated as a basis for whether it has been cited to or identified. So that, I think, is the distinction, where that line is precisely, as I suppose in the eye of the beholder. But it is, does seem to be the difference between simply identifying it as opposed to discussing the substance.
Well, the words are, when such records are publicly cited or identified in an open meeting, or in an agenda of an open meeting. And while I agree with you that perhaps at the time, in June of 2014, which was roughly four months following, or five months following that letter, and, and I think still, opinions, like I say, were the actions that we were taking, were the actions that were identified in that document opinions, or were they statements of fact of failure to follow the standards of conduct described in the contract? You know what I mean? Were they opinions, or were they very, because I'm going to tell you something, I would have not made decisions that I made based on opinion. They were not presented as opinion, they were presented as fact. And so, where does, and where does, where does the part where, when they're, it says notes preliminary drafts, research data in the process of analysis, unfunded grant proposal, memorandum, recommendations, or other records in which opinions are expressed. So I'm assuming that's what, this would be in another record. Was it a record? Is that distinct from a correspondence? Because once we sent, we sent this correspondence out, and quite frankly, after it left our hands, we have no idea who saw that document. I mean, do you have any idea? How many different eyes? I mean, we're making this sound like five eyes in your two were the only ones that ever saw this document.
That's not quite correct, Commissioner. In terms of the, this analysis relates to any document, no matter who might have it, it's simply a matter of whether it's subject to one of those, one or more, or a combination of those exemptions. And I, I possibly invited further debate as to whether anyone agrees or disagrees with those redactions, and I didn't mean to invite further debate, I simply felt the need to assure anyone that might be concerned, that when we looked at it, we looked at it seriously and with all due diligence, and in good faith. There can be differing opinions as to the application of those, those exceptions. And I don't know that this is the place to debate them, particularly when you have a pending open records request that relates to the same documents.
Well, and I'll say that I appreciate that standpoint, but also, I think it's also instructive to let people know that when your client is a city commission, that sometimes it's three commissioners. Your clients aren't always, it isn't always like a five unanimous decision that everybody agrees and is on the same page with everything. Now, I understand that we act as a board and we act as one, and I do agree, and that's why I don't have a problem with saying, yeah, you're right, I acted outside of the board, even though everybody was never in full agreement with what that board action was. So I don't have a problem with that, and, but I think it is instructive to say, what happens when, when you keep a secret, and it's because three people decided they wanted to keep the secret, not five? The two people that don't want to keep the secret are kind of at the mercy, and quite frankly, and I'll say it again, because nobody wanted to hear it, during this campaign, people brought up the fact of talking about what was in that document without knowing what was in that document, and talking about agreeing to disagree, and talking about everything else that, that, that this board, and quite frankly, you guys, acted totally in personality-driven fashions, and unprofessionally, and at, in a fashion that wasn't in the best interest of the community. And we have allowed for four years for that fallacy to perpetuate and to spread. And quite frankly, it's been destructive for four years, and quite, and I'd just like to get the, we could, could we not act as a body to say, it's our privilege to unredact that, to just let the document out, just as it is? And so, you know, perhaps what we can do when we talk about this next week, I'm assuming that this motion passes...
Well, we have a motion on the board.
Is that, is that, you know what, I hope that we have the conversation of, let's look at the merits of fully releasing that letter in its full entirety, and then people can decide for themselves whether or not I acted in my own personal interest, or in the interest of the truth. So I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, to set this item on the agenda for next week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Okay, now we have some other business. Commissioner?
There.
Well, yes, we do.
I move the city commission recess into executive session to discuss matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, with legal counsel pursuant to the attorney-client privilege communications with legal counsel exception KSA 45-7319-B2 for...
20 minutes?
20 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:00 PM. To give us three minutes for...
Are we expecting, expecting any action, or...
I don't anticipate any action on this matter. I, if I may ask you all, the, the matter relating to the personnel-based executive session that appeared on your agenda was in anticipation of any potential executive session you all might wish to have with regard to the evaluation of the city manager. We didn't know whether you wished to take that up today, or if the plan was for later. So it's there in case you needed it. I ask that now only as it might relate to whether there would be further action, if no other than the form of going into that executive session.
I would suggest that we move the personnel issue to next week.
And, and I would agree with that, and it's not due until December, as I recall, so. Everybody okay with that?
I don't think this is the date to add that to there.
I think so. This might not be your best date.
With all due respect, I don't...
Okay. So the consensus is that we move that to a new date, probably next week, or the following week. The following week, possibly.
Yeah, I think that's a matter of advising Jason as far as preparation of the agenda.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll journ into...
I seconded it, so.